I'm not anymore, six.
Okay, there you are. Now we're ready.
Good evening. The Tuesday, November 21st meeting of the planning commission is now in order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Bruce Robinson is absent and excused. Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Doug Bryson. And Steve Griffiths.
Here. Thank you, Kate. Are there any changes or revisions to the agenda?
No, there aren't.
May we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on November 7th?
I move to approve the minutes on November 7th, 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Thank you. See, nobody here for public comments, no final orders, no public hearings or deliberations this evening. And we do have some old business, and that is we will be having our second part of the presentation on affordable and workforce housing. So welcome, Richard and Allison. Thank you for being here tonight for this.
Thank you. This is part two. Last time we talked about some of the zoning things we can do and just sort of some background on affordable housing and what options are, not just for zoning, but other related matters. I wanted to have Allison come and talk about what affordable means and then about some of the things we're doing with some city property relative to affordable housing.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me to join your discussion about housing. I wanted to just start a little bit with definitions. And in general, household, a household consists of all people who occupy a housing unit regardless of the relationship. So sometimes you'll hear MHI or median household income, which obviously refers to the household. Family is defined as consisting of two or more people, one of whom is the householder, related by birth, marriage, or adoption, residing in the same housing unit. So you may also hear MFI or median family income. Different agencies use different terminology and it can get confusing. I get confused all the time about things. And so it's just good to at least know the difference between those definitions. Also, housing need. This exists when a household cannot find housing for purchase or rent that is consistent with their household characteristics like the family size, composition, whether or not they're within a commute distance to work, and is affordable. So it needs to be the housing that's the right fit and then also if it's affordable. So affordable housing is housing that costs less than 30% of a household's income, and this includes utilities. So when we're talking about if someone is cost burdened, it really is a result of a household spending more than 30% of their income for housing expenses. And the last definition I'll mention, obviously, while we're here, workforce housing. This definition's a little more difficult. Again, there are different housing agencies that define it differently. So in general, we look at workforce households as those earning between 60% and 120% of median family income. Although for the city, because we are in a coastal market and the economy is just different, housing is more expensive. In general, the city kind of views unofficially workforce housing as 80 to 120% of median family income. HUD, the Federal Housing and Urban Development, they view or offer federal subsidies for families of four that are at 100% of the value. So if you are looking to serve any market that's above 100% of median family income, then we cannot be looking for federal subsidies. And then there are state subsidies and it gets very complicated, and I am by no means an expert on any of that. We kind of learn about things as we go and we get involved with different projects. I wanted to mention also that there are also other terms like low income limit, which is considered 80% of median family income. There's something called very low income limit, which is 50% and below. And then the extremely low income limit is considered 30% of the median family income. So again, 30, 50, 80, which is extremely low income, very low income, and low income. So when we're talking about affordable housing, those are kind of the federal terms that are thrown around about how to meet the demand.
Do those terms affect federal subsidies?
Yes. So depending on what you're trying to achieve, if you're involving property development that includes federal subsidies, those are the types of income limits for the community that the project's going into that will be discussed. So again, we would not be doing these projects, but we would be partnering with other agencies and with developers who are familiar with the terminology and how to create the right partners and the right subsidies in order to make the project possible. So just wanted to include those in the definitions as we're talking about, yeah.
About what kind of number of these kinds of houses do we have in Lincoln City currently?
That's a great question. I don't have the housing needs assessment in front of me, and I know there's a lot of information in there.
Do you have subsidized housing in that needs assessment?
I don't know. The housing needs assessment just looked at bigger picture.
So all these income limits, what does that actually mean? How much money are we talking about? So according to the housing needs assessment, the 2014 median household income for Lincoln City was $35,524, while Lincoln County was about $42,000, and the state being $50,000, national being about $53,000. So you can see that Lincoln City is below the county, which is below the state, which is below national. So we are below a lot of averages when we're comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions. So again, $35,000 roughly is median household income as of 2014. And then in 2015, I have some limited information about local salaries. And the Lincoln County School District average salary range for a preschool teacher was about $21,000 a year, and for high school about $62,000. For Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital, the average salary is about $36,000. And for the Lincoln County service industry, which is often part-time or seasonal, could be accommodations, food services, leisure, hospitality, and those salaries range about $13,000 to $17,000 per year. Now remember, that's one person. And sometimes in a household, you have one person earning money and working, and sometimes you have two, sometimes three. So we don't always know what the household structure is in order to make the housing affordable. What was I also going to mention? Let's see. So in order to be able to afford an apartment for $900 a month, which we understand is roughly what new apartments are going for, and not be housing burdened, the household must bring in about $36,000 a year. And if the same household were interested or able in buying a home, then they could afford a home for about $123,000, which we know, yes.
Are these salary numbers pre or post-tax?
Pre.
So there's even less money, usable money?
Yes, and when banks are looking at qualifying, they look at your pre-tax. Yeah. Yeah, it gets challenging. And let's see, okay, so if, for a household who's bringing in $36,000 a year, that would be $900 a month or $123,000 for a home sale price, which we know is kind of tough going. So in most circumstances, then people would have to either find a home that is not in as great shape and put in a lot of sweat equity in order to have some capital to do that, or find a smaller home. If you can find one for $123,000 on the coast, I don't know. And then, let's see, the last thing I wanted to mention is, just to go back to the local salaries, for a household that's making $13,000 a year, the affordable rent would be $336 a month. And for $62,000 a year, the affordable rent would be about $1550 a month.
Does that include utilities or not?
This is all based on that 30% of income. So with the 30%, what the industry or banking lenders are looking for, they figure that that's what it takes for the whole household cost.
So that is including utilities?
Yeah. So that's kind of a lot of numbers and definitions. Are there any questions on those in particular?
You mentioned a couple of those numbers, you know, that you had for employment numbers. Is, like, Chinook Winds our biggest employer in the county?
Yes, so...
They're $11 an hour?
Yeah, I don't know what their average salaries are. An average is really tough because you have anything from entry level folks all the way up to people who've, you know, very, you know, have invested a lot of time in that industry, so, yeah.
Is there any breakdown on the percentage of employees, say, who work in the educational system or at the hospital versus those who work in the service industry? I would assume it's weighted heavily towards the service industry.
Yeah, I don't have that information in front of me, but, yeah, like, what is our economic profile for our workers? That's a really good question. I don't know for sure. Okay, so I wanted to also mention that kind of where we're at with some city properties. And back in May, there was some discussion about what properties does the city have and what should be done with them. Are they worthwhile holding on to for different reasons? Should they be moved and tried to get back on the tax rolls? Or should there be something that happens, you know, with them? So in May, staff provided a list of those city-owned properties to the city council for discussion. And out of that discussion, a few months later, there were some properties that were declared surplus, which means they don't have a public purpose. And so those are actually going to be sold, and then the proceeds from those properties will go into the city's workforce housing fund in order to help implement getting more workforce housing on the ground. And then there were some properties that were decided that they should become workforce housing. And so those are going to be moving forward with development. And so I'll just run through what those properties are, and then we can talk about next steps for property development. So this is a property in D-Lake that was purchased using the city sewer fund. And we will have to work out some information, discussions with a deed restriction, but otherwise, we will be either giving part of that back and/or selling part of it. And so those proceeds, this is one of the properties that was declared surplus that will go into funding more workforce housing development. This is another property. This is the Third Street parking lot. So not all of this property would be sold, but a portion of it after we are able to divide it and then retain some public water access. And there's also going to be a pump station that needs to be expanded. So after those things are done, then this property would be sold with any profits going to workforce housing. This is a property in Nelscott, and this property was actually given to Habitat for Humanity, but because of the topography, they were not able to build an affordable home there. So they gave it back to the city, and the city traded them for some other property to build. So this one came back, so it'll be sold. These properties are in Taft, and they also have challenges with topography, which, as you know, as soon as you get a site that is more expensive to design and engineer, then the money that's needed to provide enough subsidy to make it affordable usually gets to be too great. So while these might be great for market rate homes, they're just not suitable for workforce or affordable housing. These are another couple of smaller properties that are in residential area and suitable for market rate, but not for workforce or affordable housing. And this parcel in Keller City, same thing. So next, I'll show you this property, which was declared surplus, but it's almost four acres. And so, yes, it's going to have some challenges with topography, but mostly it has a lot of development potential. And this one will be included in the development offering. We have a development consultant. His name is John Southgate, who has experience with property development and basically helping cities find the right developer. And so we're working with him to bring forward a draft development offering in early January. And the city council will review that, and then with their approval, we will issue that development offering in probably late January. And then we'll have a total of eight properties. Four urban renewal properties for commercial and mixed-use development, and then four city properties. Three of the city properties are for housing or residential.
This property is just north of the Episcopal Church in Curtis Park, if you're wondering where it is. It's on the east side of the highway.
That would be targeted for housing?
Yes. Yeah, the goal is to try to maximize the number of workforce housing units on this property. This property is in Ocean Lake, and this is near the skate park. This one also, the goal would be to develop workforce housing.
How large is that area?
This one is just under three acres, but a portion of it would be developable. I'll need to actually make a note to adjust that in grace. Yeah, Richard has more background on this property than I do.
That's right by the skate park that street goes, does go through. This was originally, actually partially developed. Some of the infrastructure was put in for a townhouse development that for some reason failed, and the city now has it, but there is the street that goes all the way around that sort of peninsula area. And that area within the peninsula, the southern piece of it, would be the area that would be developed. But we could transfer some of the density off the other portion of it to that smaller area because it is one piece.
Do we know how many units the current zoning would allow on those two pieces?
Actually, would allow a lot more than are practical to be built there. We're thinking something around 18 units might be able to go in there.
On this one?
Yes.
What about the one fire?
That could conceivably be, I think, about 40 units, we're thinking is a possibility. There's topographic challenges on that piece. And there's, actually, we're also looking at that. There's other organizations that are interested in possibly doing something jointly with the city for additional kinds of needed housing, not necessarily just workforce housing, but like senior housing or veterans housing, something like that. So that's areas that we're exploring as well.
And then the last parcel that we hope to include in the development offering is Fernwood, Phase One. And of course, the timing with this is going to depend on the revision of the master plan and that process. But if the timing works out well, then we would want to include this one in that offering. The consultant that we're working with really encourages us to include as many properties that we are interested in developing as possible because what we've encountered is there are some developers that are interested in commercial and mixed-use development. And because they do mixed use, they came from a residential background. And so we're finding that some developers have moved from that into mixed use. And then we're also doing tours of properties with more traditional housing developers. So really, it's kind of, it's been interesting to talk with developers and hear their feedback on these properties. But what we're finding is, you know, we don't want to overwhelm them, but we do want to include all of the development potential that we have to offer so that we can have more word of mouth and more kind of cross-referencing if developers in the community kind of know one another. And if there are some that know, they can pass it along to others that they might know or interested or looking for coastal market opportunities.
And what are those red lines indicating?
Those red lines are existing lot lines.
Existing lot lines?
Yes. Now, you may have noticed last night in the presentation about the village's master plan that the recommendation is to not develop the interior of, that's what they call the peanut on the inside of that loop with housing, just to keep that whole area as a park for the surrounding properties.
That's where this is, okay.
But that was subdivided. The utilities roughed in before the former owner abandoned the project.
Has the city explored working with community land trusts like Proud Ground to develop affordable housing? Is that a potential option?
Definitely. Yeah, I'm actually on the board for the Lincoln Community Land Trust. And as you know, we have two homes in the land trust portfolio, and both of those homes are in Lincoln City, proud to say. Proud Ground is the administrator that we contract with for the Lincoln Community Land Trust. And they have definitely expressed interest and are working closely with staff here to make sure that if there's an opportunity to get a piece of land in one or more of these projects, then they'll definitely be ready to partner.
Might the city consider granting them land for that purpose?
Yes. I, you know, housing is a continuum from the very low-income market all the way up to homeownership. And the land trust is a great stepping stone for folks to go from rental into very, it's near, nearly the same as market rate homeownership. It just is a lower cost, and it shares in the appreciation of the house over time. So it's great because it is basically like regular homeownership. You have to pay taxes, and you just are leasing the land instead of owning the land. So we want to, you know, be mindful of trying to make sure that we're offering homeownership opportunities, but we also have lots of opportunity to meet the market with rental. And it's tough to do everything, and we have limited properties. And so trying to figure out, you know, based on what the developers are interested in doing, that's really what we're going to be looking to, is what makes sense for the market? And then how can we provide the land for that? So if there's a piece of property that the city owns that's a single-family home or something with some number of townhomes that the land trust has the ability to develop, then that would definitely be a good project. But in this case, I think what we're going for more is rental, workforce rental housing, and not so much into the homeownership. Now, in Fernwood, it may make sense to have one or two lots or some percentage of the lots if the developer feels like that's something that can be workable for their bottom line with whatever they're asking for. You know, we have to negotiate on all of these different properties. But, and they'll have, the city council will have to make decisions as they go along with these negotiations. But I think the most, the most we can accomplish, the better. And it's hard to know that until we have some interest from developers in front of us.
Got a question. Do we have, or a way to develop an inventory of need? Like, people who have currently employment here but can't find housing? Because I've heard things like the hospital saying, "We could fill these positions, but nobody can live here at the housing market." And, you know, the city's had issues with several people. The police department had issues for a while with people that would have taken jobs but couldn't find housing. So is there a way to develop a need, some kind of a number, so that we could, we could use that as a tool to go to the developers and say, "Look, we have, you know, 30, 40 people at this price range that would buy houses if we had them at that range." And, you know, because I know Chinook Winds has a problem keeping their jobs filled because they can't, they can't find employees that, you know, can afford to pay rent. So I guess if we had a needs assessment that actually showed how many bodies could we fill houses with if we had houses to fill, you know, we could maybe sell that to a developer, you know?
There's a lot of anecdotal information.
I know.
What you talked about. I think that, to get like a real accurate kind of survey thing, I think would be very difficult for two reasons. One, large employers, I don't know if, how they would collect that information, where X number of our employees want to buy a house at this price range or something. I think that might be difficult.
About empty jobs, jobs we have that aren't being filled, and then use that as a starting point?
Well, again, that, yeah, and we probably could get that kind of information, especially from the larger employers. I think also complicating the fact, getting that information, though, is the fact that so many of our employers are very small businesses. And just being able to reach out to them.
And get information.
Not the easiest thing, so. As we know, that, we, there's a lot of information out there, it's the anecdotal information, where from the school district, from the city, from the hospital, the casino, and others, that it's just difficult to, we definitely have an issue, and it's really clear. I don't think there's any question. I don't think anybody questions whether there's a need for...
Well, I'm just using, I was thinking, using it when we have it as a tool to work with a developer and say, "Look, we know we can, here's why we know you can fill those houses if you build those houses, or those apartments if you build those apartments." Because it seems like Barnes, when he builds something around here, he's got it totally remnant before he's got it painted. I mean, you know, he was talking to us a couple of times when he was in here, and he seemed to have, you know, had, he has no problem filling everything that he builds instantly. So if we have that to sell to a developer, or not to sell, but to sell the property...
Give them that information, yeah.
Seems to me that in our housing needs analysis, didn't they, did they have a number for the number of people who commute to Lincoln City?
There's a starting point, yeah.
And I mean, there are other reasons why people might be living outside the city, but lack of housing and affordability would be high among those.
It just, I'm thinking of it as a tool to motivate a developer, you know?
More information.
Thank you.
On this property, I'm curious about how this relates to the conceptual plan that was presented last night on the villages. was presented last night on the villages. Because this shows lots, as you said, in the middle, where the conceptual plan suggests that's a park. If a developer came in and wanted to develop this, how do they, how do they relate to that master plan?
Well, we would say, well, I'll tell you what we did. We've offered this property once before, and what we did was say it's subdivided as it is, but we're open to changes to it, you know, that you may find more, you know, a different mix of housing types that would work better. Since it is city property, we can specify that, actually, maybe even the center part of it doesn't get sold. We'll just sell the exterior lots, and that's what we offer. So there's ways to do it. Given that it's our, you know, the city's land, we have a lot of control over what happens.
Are there other pieces of the villages that have, that fall into this kind of category of affordable housing or workforce housing?
Well, this is the only one that is as ready as it is. Again, with a roughed-in road, the conduits are in for utilities. So that's, we thought we would try to market it first. I see it, and I think the staff sees it as, not as solely workforce housing, but as a mix of market housing and workforce housing, as we hope that all of the villages will end up being, whatever the property ends up being named.
Any other questions?
No questions.
I have a question on how much we are able to talk about the villages as, going forward as a planning commission, because I understand that we're the final decision-maker, and then it goes to the council. And my question is, I think it's a great development, that it has been on the market for 25 years, basically. There's been villages at Cascade Head, et cetera, et cetera, since 92 or 93, when it was conceptualized. And I think that it should have a new image so that it can go to market with a fresh look in the Portland area and such, for good developers. And I like the name that was suggested last night at the city council, but I'm reticent to talk about it very much because what is our job, can I, can we ensure?
Can you explain to us what we should be doing or not doing in regards to talking about the villages' master plan, since it'd be coming to us for the decision?
The city attorney can correct me, but you want to talk about the name, that's fine, you know. The name that was brought up was Wilcomah Woods. There's, you know, there's all kinds of name possibilities. As far as talking about the substance of the proposed plan, I think that would be inappropriate before, until it comes before the commission with an application. Do you want to amplify that at all, Mr. Appicello?
Yes. You're going to review an application that hasn't been submitted yet, so you're not the owner. The council, you know, acquired the property, and they're not asking you to prepare the application for them. They've hired consultants to do that. So you're going to act in a quasi-initiative fashion and review the application once it's submitted. So you're, the danger for you is you're going to receive information next Part A that you'll have to disclose. The danger for you is you may say something that may exclude you based on bias, you may appear to have a bias. So probably just wait until you get the application to do your review.
Can we suggest to the staff to think about putting a name on the?
I think the owner gets to name their project. And as the, you know, the planning commission generally, I think the only input on names that you get is, you know, conflicting street names and things like that under the code. It's not really an approval criterion. But I think that they, again, city council's hired a consultant, and obviously, one of the things they're going to talk about is, or they are talking about, is how to make it marketable. And so obviously, the name is going to come up and has come up. So I think as a private citizen, you can say whatever you'd like to your elected representatives. But I would just caution you to remember, you're going to sit as the reviewing body, and you're going to review this application for compliance with the code and to see if it's, you know, a good plan. But you're not charged with creating the plan. So just remember that the city's hired someone to do that, so.
Richard, do you have an estimated time when you think we'll be bringing that application?
First quarter of next year sometime, probably late in the first quarter.
In the meantime, the city is moving forward and trying to find developers to develop some of these properties you described tonight?
Yeah, we won't be issuing the formal development offering until late January at the earliest. And if the timing doesn't work, then we won't include Fernwood. But if the timing does work, then we will. And then we'll probably have that open for about eight weeks, and then we'll review things and we'll make decisions about developers. If we have eight properties, we could conceivably have eight different developers that we are negotiating with on each property. I'm hoping it won't be that complicated because obviously, those are different conversations. But we don't know what the interest will be. I mean, that would be a good problem to have if we had a lot of developer interest for these properties. But we'll just kind of see how that goes.
And are we marketing this locally, or how far, how wide?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we've been building relationships with individual developers through our consultant, and then through, basically, conferences, talking with industry professionals, staff, people who we know have expressed an interest in Lincoln City. So we'll make it available on the website, and we'll be talking about it so that people can know and pass it along to other folks. So, yeah.
Allison, I think what I was talking about earlier, if we could show a job, unfulfilled job need, it might be a good tool to interest people, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that point. I've made a note, and we'll be talking about what, you know, we don't, we don't want to create too much information for developers, but we want to provide access to information. So I think that's a definitely a good thing that we include somewhere in the appendix along with a lot of the other information that we have for each property. So, thank you.
So, am I correct that there really isn't much we can do for you until we see some proposal come forward from a developer?
Yeah, for the, for the work that I'm doing, yes. And I think it's exciting. And I mean, we've had these properties for a number of years. And I commend the city council for moving them forward. And we just hope that the market will respond by making them available for projects. So, yeah.
Good luck. I appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's very exciting. We haven't done this before, so I'm sure there might be bumps along the road. But we all have the shared vision of what the outcomes will be. So, thanks.
All right.
There's more.
While you're queuing that up, can I ask you a question, Richard, from last meeting?
Sorry?
Oh, I was going to ask you a question while you queued it up, but you were too quick.
Go ahead.
We talked about the fact that the housing summary doesn't include Rhodes End. And I'm, the question I meant to ask, that I guess I didn't, because it isn't reflected in the notes, can that happen? Can you augment the housing summary that you've done to include the housing characteristics of Rhodes End? I mean, it's a significant number of houses.
I'll look into it and see what, what would be involved in that.
Thank you.
Speaking of last time, there were various things we went, we talked about that we can do from a planning standpoint, and wanted to touch on it a little bit. There's a couple of things that we haven't addressed in Lincoln City. Of all the tools that are out there for affordable housing that might relate to zoning, there are a few things we haven't addressed, one being the so-called big houses, which, remind you, are things that look like a big house, but really are essentially a fourplex or a sixplex or something like that. There are places, this would be allowed pretty much automatically in an RM zone, but there are communities that have looked at ways to add them to allow increased density in what might traditionally be a single-family residential zone, because they essentially look like single-family residences and would fit in well. So that's one thing that could be pursued. And at the other end of the spectrum is the tiny houses. And there are, there's a whole range of things that people are talking about as tiny houses, whether, like on the right, the picture on the right here is actually a park model RV on a foundation. The one on the left is what we call a tiny house on wheels. And there are, there are things that are like the one on the left, but are site-built, or some places require the ones on wheels to have their wheels removed. Other places require them to just be skirted when they're, when they're put on a site. Some, actually, to make them seem more permanent, I've seen that they require a porch to be added to them so that they're sort of nestled into the place where they are. But there can be like a tiny house zone or something like that where they're allowed at a relatively high density compared to the normal density. That would essentially be, can be kind of like the density that we allow for manufactured home parks or mobile home parks, I mean, where, or RV parks, where it's, I think each one has to have 1,200 square feet, which is, and that's not the house, that's the site that it's on, which is similar to the density that we allow for multifamily residential. So that's a possibility of something we can add to our code. Other things we can do is take a hard look at our multifamily housing requirements. Right now, the way it's set up in calculating density is, first thing you do is take out 8,000 square feet for the first two units, and then depending on its, the site's location relative to commercial zoning, divide the remainder, or depending on whether it's a split lot or something, by either 1,200 for high-density multifamily, or 2,250 square feet for low-density. Conceivably, we could, we could allow all multifamily at the high-density standard, and also possibly eliminate the 8,000-square-foot subtraction at the beginning. So instead of getting two units for that first 8,000 square feet, you could get whatever, six units in there. So that could make a difference. Other things can be done on multifamily is reduce the parking requirement, where right now, we require two parking spaces per apartment. There are places that have, require fewer, one and a half parking spaces per unit, one parking space per unit. There are even places that don't require any parking spaces. And leave it up to the developer to decide how much to provide, if any, with people in parking on the street in the neighborhood where they are. It has proven controversial with the no required parking, but it may be that a reduced parking is a possibility. So there's things we might want to look at on our multifamily standards. I'm pointing these things out, really what I'm asking tonight, what do you want to do about affordable housing, workforce housing in Lincoln City? So I'm throwing out some things that we can do, some possibilities. So, bringing it up. The state legislature recently allowed us to, allowed communities to require inclusionary zoning, where if you have an apartment building with 20 units or more, actually with more than 20 units, you could require up to 20% of the units to be affordable units. There is a cost for that. There is property tax abatement and other incentives that would be required in exchange for that. Developers also could pay into a fee and lieu program where they didn't have to provide affordable housing, but they wouldn't have to provide money so that it could be provided elsewhere, go into a fund for that. The legislation also allows cities to set up a construction excise tax. Right now, there's a school excise tax that we charge for residential. I believe it's a dollar a square foot for the construction excise, or for the school excise tax.
Roughly, it's gone up by a few cents.
And so when someone comes in for a building permit, they want a 1,200-square-foot house, they pay that number of square feet times the fee, which is a little over a dollar. And then it goes into a, well, for the school excise tax, it goes into a fund for schools. Construction excise tax would be similar. It would then go into a fund for affordable housing. And you'll remember, this is, all these slides are from our last meeting, I'm just hitting them. The housing needs assessment had a list of several, actually many, things to consider, some of which I think are appropriate for the planning commission to address, either as recommendations or as just something you would want to look into, like explore innovative approaches to system development charges. And that's, that's not land use, that's not a land use issue, but you certainly can make a recommendation to the council that they pursue something. What we've been talking about at the staff level is a, is system development charges based on square footage, so that a small house pays a lower charge than a large house does. Right now, it's across the board, whether it's a 6,000-square-foot house or a 600-square-foot house, they pay the same SDCs. Expedited, I'm sorry.
Is that the one that we were talking about, where you can calculate it based on number of bathrooms, or?
That's another way of doing it. I've talked to the public works staff, and they're not, not keen on that idea at all. Much prefer the idea of square footage rather than fixtures. Expedited review, we could set up a system essentially like that where affordable workforce housing or something would just go to the front of the line, for example, just automatically go to the front.
How long does the review process normally take, and how much?
The ideal is about two weeks, or I think it's taking longer than that. Kate, if you have any insight on?
For a new single-family, probably about four weeks.
And that's to go through the whole process, public works, planning, and building.
And that's because of the volume of applications?
There's volume, there's usually a lot of things that need to be addressed. You know, we, all the departments have We, all the departments have a pretty lean staff, and like this year, so far, we've, I think we've had 77 building permit, for single-family homes, building permit applications come in, and hundreds more for other things, but, and they, they all take a substantial amount of time to review.
So how would you expedite that?
Well, I'm saying, just put it at the front of the line.
So everything else just gets on hold?
Everything gets bumped down, well, it gets bumped down, until, that's just a possibility.
Are you saying that it takes longer now because of your method of plan checking? Is that what you're saying, or because at one point in time, you offloaded that to another company that was paid so much for?
We pay, we pay Northwest Code professionals to do our plan checks, as well as do the building inspections. We don't have a building official or plans examiner on the staff here, they provide that through a contractor. That is one-third of the review that gets done, because we review things for planning purposes, and also public works has to review them for things like stormwater erosion control and so on. And essentially, all three are stretched to be able to deal with things. With, the recession did a lot of damage to the, to building departments throughout the state, and getting, Chomeka College had a plans examiner, building official program, education program, they shut it down. Other people went to, people who were trained went to other states or whatever. Finding people who are skilled enough to do plans examinations and inspections is very difficult. It's, and it's just, it just slows things down, because...
You're still suffering from the recession?
Yes, you know, being able to get staff. And that's, as far as, as planning and public works, we have a lot, you know, the people responsible for that, that's not the only thing they do, it's, there are a lot to do, and it's one of many things, and it's a priority, but it just, it doesn't happen as fast as we would like, because there's so many other things drawing on their time.
So the potential to get a, a plan examiner dedicated specifically to affordable housing wouldn't be an easy task? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, again, but that it...
I mean, it's a contract, right? So it would be per unit?
We pay Northwest Code professionals 75% of what we collect on, on our fees for, for building permits. And they have several other jurisdictions that they do work for. It's, if, when they add a person, it's, it's a, it's a big commitment, and they got to make sure that the money's in the pipeline. When we, during the, the building boom, we had extra staff here, they had extra staff, the recession hit, and all of a sudden, there was no need for those people, and it caused a lot of, it caused layoffs, both here and with professionals, and then trying to get back up to it, and people are still leery of staffing up and not knowing whether you're going to need that person for any, for a prolonged period of time. And affordable housing, you know, I don't know how many we're going to build in a year, or will be built in Lincoln City in a year, and what would justify someone with that?
Is it an exclusive contract with them?
Yes.
So you can't go outside and find a, find someone that could just?
No, we're required to give them all our, all our work.
How long is that contract for?
We just renewed it, but it's been, we've had it for 12 or, 12 or 15 years, something like that. There's not a, a lot of competitors for them out there. And in fact, the state building codes division, for some reason, is trying to make it harder for third-party plans examiners. I don't know why there are, but it's, it's actually causing problems, and for a lot of communities to be able to find, find contractors who are able to do it.
I think maybe we should add a little perspective, you know, a lot of people have come up to the counter and say, wow, that's great, four weeks, you know, four weeks, that's, that sounds pretty good. I mean, there are people who come up and say, it should be done next week, but I don't, I don't know. Richard, have you ever talked to other municipalities about how long Arcade, how long it takes for them to review plans?
My, my father-in-law's an architect in Portland, and he speaks nothing of nightmares from the, going to talk to the city about permitting, talking months, many months. And if you're a single-family home, you're, you're getting pushed down line, because they want big. So it would take, it took him six months to redo his, one of his little jobs.
We have talked about other ways to reduce that, that turnaround time, and maybe you're going to hit that later on, about having some pre-approved type designs for affordable housing.
Yeah, I will mention that. Yeah, and, you know, we've got a electronic system for processing building permits, for keeping track of them. And one of the features of it is plans can be scanned and then reviewed electronically, and conceivably, that could be done simultaneously. One of, one of the issues with, with, like, having three sets of the plans go out and come back, is you get three sets of notes written on the plans, and you have to consolidate it on one. If we can do it electronically, it could be done simultaneously, perhaps, and that could reduce the turnaround time, rather than doing it sequentially. But there's issues with being able to actually get the, get the plans into the system. Some places require electronic submissions, we don't. And I believe that a lot of builders don't have the capability to submit electronic plans.
Richard, of the suggestions you have there, how, which do you think would have the greatest impact on making affording, making housing more affordable, and how would you prioritize them?
How would I what?
Prioritize them.
Well, the innovative approaches to SDCs, we can figure out how to reduce SDCs, that will help. Minimize parking requirements, the fourth one there, that's, that's a land cost, and if that can be reduced, I think that would, could help. I've got more pages of this. So the other ones in there, like, especially the last three, are bigger, bigger ideas that will take some time to sort through. Local accelerator, for example, that's, that will take a lot of thought to set up, and to find the people who can be involved in that. What I wanted to focus on tonight is the, is the things that the Planning Commission can help address, and we can set up a, you know, a program for working on over the, over the coming months. So there's, this, again, this is just a list of what's in the Housing Needs Assessment. Working with major employers on housing for their employees. Allison showed you, there's two properties that we're looking, that we're looking at, the four-acre piece by the Episcopal Church, and then the other piece by the skate park. We are approaching other employers in particular. We've talked, excuse me, we've talked, we've talked to a hospital, they're very interested in working with us on that. You may remember that they came to a hearing on apartment development, and said, we need housing, I mean, that was, that was really clear. And they, at, at higher levels, not just local level, for the hospital system, but for their, the overall hospital system, talking with, with their officials, they're saying, yes, let's, let's get together and work on something. So that's the kind of thing we're pursuing. Affordable housing program, we have a fund. We, when we bought the villages at Cascadehead property, we exhausted that fund, there's about, I'd say about $400,000 came out of that fund to help us buy the villages. And we want to pay that back and/or provide affordable housing in the villages at Cascadehead. So that, the land sales we're talking about, some of them, especially the individual single-family housing lots, outs, that were, you know, some in Taft, some in, in other areas of the city, those funds will go, when we sell the land, the money that we get would go into the Affordable Housing Fund. And another, another way to get money into it is through a construction excise tax. That's, that's not a decision you can make, but you can make a recommendation to the council to, to look into going ahead on that, or whatever.
What's the land value of that Fernwood tract?
Um, you know, each of the, I think there's like 62 lots there right now, and they, you can figure they're about, I think the county assessor says they're worth 20,000 to 25,000 dollars apiece.
So donating that land to, back to the Affordable Housing Fund would go a long way toward paying back the amount you borrowed from them?
Oh, getting the money from the sale of that land, if that's what you're talking about, sure it would, you know, because it would, I haven't worked out what that is, what 60 times 25, that's, 1.5 million, something like that? So, yeah, I mean, that would be a lot. Also, that would go to, we paid two and a half million for the whole villages at Cascadehead project, and we could get a big piece of it back just from that. I doubt that the council would want to put all of that money into affordable housing, because that, again, that was only, that was only a, like, less than a fifth, I think, of the funds that were used for purchasing the villages came from the Affordable Housing Fund. But I know it's a priority for the council, too, to be able to provide affordable housing.
Would we arrive at affordable housing more directly and faster if we simply made a grant of some of that property to a community land trust for development?
Not necessarily. Allison may want to come back up and talk about how the community land trust works, but, you know, with, there's, there's been two units built in Lincoln County, you know, since whenever, and so it's not, it's not the fastest, easiest process to go through.
Yeah, so for the two homes that we have in town, the reason why they were possible is because there was a federal program at the time called the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And we were partnering with Community Services Consortium at that time to administer the land trust for us, because it's an all-volunteer board, and we needed staff. And CSC saw that the NSP program, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, was available. And that program is no longer available, but it really was created to respond to all the foreclosures that were happening across the nation. And there were two cities in Lincoln County, Lincoln City and Toledo, that were qualifying cities to participate in that Neighborhood Stabilization Program. The folks at Community Services Consortium were not able to secure any property in Toledo, but they were successful in getting a couple of properties here in Lincoln City. Actually, one was just outside the city limits in the county. So that was a two, well, it wasn't two lots, it was one property, but divisible, and so one home was renovated, the property was divided, and then a new construction project of a single-family home was done on that extra space of the property. So you're right, free land was enough subsidy in that case. The way that they were able to build the home was using the Affordable Housing Fund, we have about $130,000 that we make available to, as like a construction loan, and that home was able to be built for $130,000. I think that would be a pretty tall order in today's market. It would probably take more than that to create the quality and size of a home like what we got already, but we're glad to have those two homes. So, yes, making land available is the first step, but there is still need for subsidy because construction costs are higher than they were in 2010, 11. So the land trust does look for other grant monies and other partners in order to build homes.
Is, is, would local businesses be able to donate to the land trust as a write-off?
Yes, it's, it's a nonprofit, so...
Okay.
Yes, donations could be made. There are also opportunities for people to put in their estate planning, donation of property. Of course, if it were an Ocean View property, that, the land trust would probably sell that for market rate in order to build homes that are more well-suited for affordability. And we also have Habitat for Humanity of Lincoln County, and the city has partnered with them, we have several homes. The, the catch with Habitat for Humanity is they meet a different market, so they are 60% of median family income and below, and the land trust is 60% to 120%. So land trust really focuses on workforce, and Habitat focuses on, we, we do have working families that are in Habitat homes, but lower income. So, yeah. I don't know if I answered your question, but making land available is the first step.
So, yeah, so those are, actually, there, I think that's, okay. One of the things we're, we're looking at is approved designs, where, actually, we have some money in the budget, and we, and we have a designer in mind, working on a contract to, to offer to him, to develop probably four designs for smaller houses that would be affordable, and that we would make the plans available for free, we would pre-approve them, so that the only thing that would need to be approved is the foundation, because it'll vary from site to site. So that would reduce the, the time and the cost for plan reviews.
And would those be suitable for ADUs, or would they qualify?
Yes. At least some of them will be suitable for ADUs, yeah.
The inclusionary zoning, that 20-unit minimum, that's set by the state?
Yes.
So we don't have any flexibility in reducing that number?
Right.
Doesn't seem to be a very popular strategy among...
I would think there's a lot of 19-unit buildings going up.
Yes, that's what I'm hearing, but...
Scratch that.
Yeah, well, whatever. And then we can also, we'll take a hard look at our, at our zoning orders, to see if there are things that are barriers to affordability of housing. The parking requirement being a good example of that, where maybe we need to reevaluate what we require, at least for multifamily. And maybe even for smaller houses, where it can be a function of the number of bedrooms or whatever, you know, something like that.
So do you have plans to do some sort of survey of existing apartments and available parking to figure out whether or not they're all utilized?
I, actually, I do have plans to do that, as a matter of getting out there. We need to look at multiple sites and also multiple times of day. Like, in particular, look at night, when presumably people are home, versus midday or...
Well, I would think you could also survey the apartment owners to find out how many of their renters have multiple cars.
If they know, a lot of places don't have assigned parking, and just say, you know, if you can get your car on here, fine, if not, you know, it's just, the parking spaces are essentially free-for-all.
Right, but if they're, if the assumption is that... Right, but if they're, if the assumption is that you're providing two parking places per unit, the assumption is there are two cars per unit. So I'm just questioning whether that's a valid assumption or whether...
Well, that's what we want to find out.
...really more single-car renters.
Right. Yeah. And, uh, the, the, the two per unit, we all, I think it was also intended to address the idea of some, some guest parking as well, so, but we just need to see how that, how that works.
I think one of the developers that came before us mentioned, they actually allocate an average of 1.5 parking spots for their units, so...
So, but, so two units?
Two parking spots seems like a luxury, especially for studio apartment or a one-bedroom apartment or...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And we have for, uh, senior housing units, the code establishes something called senior housing. And the requirement for that is one per bedroom with a, a minimum of one, so like a studio apartment or a one-bedroom apartment would only require one parking space, two-bedroom would require two. So, so the question is, how do you want to proceed? I've tried to outline some things that I think are, uh, sort of within your, uh, area of authority and responsibility and that, uh, staff can pursue, uh, the big houses, tiny houses, looking at our, uh, multifamily requirements and, uh, things like that, where I had the list there.
Well, it sounds like we have some, I mean, the tiny houses, um, I, I, I think, Deborah, you mentioned at the last meeting a concern about quality of building of them, so it seems to me perhaps the building codes associated with tiny houses would need to be...
The state is developing a new code specifically for, or code, part of the code for...
The students.
I'm not sure when that's going to be available, but, uh, I'll find that out.
I'd certainly think, um, a quick address on the parking, you, you know, required parking per apartment would be a, uh, at least a real easy and, and a quick attack. And, and so would I, you know, I would, on the, um, pre-approved designs, I like that idea, that seems to be something that would move it in a quick way. And then zoning, zoning barriers is something we probably need to look at all the time because reducing regulation reduces cost.
Maybe making changes in the SDC, you know, if it was square footage, by square...
That would be good too, yeah, that would be another fast attack.
If I can go back to what Commissioner Cunningham said, one thing, we need to balance things in here, like, we can do lots of things to reduce cost, but it may end up, that we end up with a, with a, a bad product. It's cheap, but, but bad.
Right.
So we need to balance that out. And one of the things we've been talking about, um, I don't know, especially those of you who were at the, at the meeting last night, may have heard that, yeah, we got some apartments recently and, uh, a lot of people think they're really ugly. And so we want to not, make, not make, not exacerbate the problem, in fact, actually improve things where there's some relatively minor changes that can be made where that we end up with a much more attractive product at, uh, with, uh, with probably a minimal effect on cost.
And that minimizes turnover among rentals and the occupancy.
And actually, it, for, uh, for some of them, it actually, it can actually result in units being more desirable and the owner may be able to get higher rent on those particular units that are more attractive to, and that would help make, uh, other, other units that are, uh, can be made available at a lower cost.
Are your pre-approved des- designs all for single-family homes?
It's the intent, yes.
Wouldn't it make sense to perhaps have a pre-approved design for a duplex or a fourplex?
Duplex, we probably could do, fourplex gets much more complicated. Um, I can find that out, but, uh...
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, you showed, you, I, we've talked about the, the big houses, I don't know if I like that term or not, but the homes that look like homes but actually have multiple units in them and usually they're, I don't know, four or six that are in those big ones. It just seems that if you have, I mean, we, we have a need for that missing middle. And i- it isn't just single-family homes that I would think would, would be helpful to be building. I think multi, multifamily homes would be good to have a pre-approved design as well, especially if you want to get away from the, it's a functional shape, it's a box kind of look, you know? And you want to provide a pre-approved design that has a little more style to it and yet is affordable to construct, that might be a nice thing to offer.
It's a different building code.
Sure.
I'll check it out.
Yeah, I'd say go forward with these ideas and, you know, see, take them to the city council, yeah.
Okay, we, we can, uh, this will happen over, it's not gonna, it won't be at your next meeting. It, it'll take some time, but, uh, we will proceed with a number of these.
And do we know, is there an increasing market within the state for some of these new ideas, like big houses that are really fourplexes or duplexes? Is there a growing market for that or a growing interest by developers in that kind of development?
Um, I've heard in other places there are, I don't know if there, if it is here or not. I know there's, uh, we went through the, the rezoning in, in Rhodes Inn and there was resistance to duplexes, not from builders but from residents. Um, so, uh, you know, there will be, there's that issue to deal with. Um, I don't know whether that, uh, demand is there or builder interest is there for, like, like the fourplexes or something, and it may be that they don't know about it. Because like, we have, we've had very little, uh, uh, in the number of, of accessory dwelling units and I think that the, one of the principal reasons is that people don't know that they can have an accessory dwelling.
I think we need to look, explore ways where we can get the word out about the opportunities for that, you know?
That's what I have for tonight.
Oh, thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. Um, no new business, no training scheduled for tonight, reports and comments, any from staff?
Um, no, um, no, not this time. I do just, I, one thing, I'm, we are working on the, uh, revised preliminary master plan for the villages at Cascadehead property and, um, we expect to bring that back probably in, uh, we conceive it, well, early next year sometime, we'll bring it back.
Any, uh, comments from the city attorney, fellow commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, at the last meeting, um, I asked about the city tree ordinance and that it's very complicated and I'd like to see us revise that. And I would like to see us revise that in light of the fact that we're going to be seeing this master plan coming through and it would be nice to have something a little more streamlined regarding the tree ordinance to apply to the woods.
I think one of the ideas that was expressed in that discussion was incorporating existing trees in new developments instead of knocking them all down and planting new ones.
And I, the only other thing I would, um, want to suggest is, as a part of the Imagine Lincoln City, we had an, an open house that was, um, really broadly attended and a lot of great ideas came up. And it struck me that, um, Steve and I were at the Sustainability Station and, yeah, environmental and sustainability. And a lot of folks, um, had comments about the, the comments that had already been made plus added some new ones. It struck me that many of those probably shouldn't have to wait for twenty years to be implemented, so I'd like to see us, um, as a planning commission, kind of consider some of those ideas that were brought up. I didn't bring the list with me, but there are some intriguing ones that don't seem like they would be too tough to, to implement, so heads up.
Implementing them quickly would be, uh, a good way of showing they're making progress on the business of the city.
Okay. Uh, related to that, I want to mention that, you know, we had the, that list of, of things for people to look at, came out of that first survey that we did, largely came out of that. Um, the, the list that you saw in that meeting, we're going to put out in a survey format so people can participate online and, and make the comments and, uh, uh, say which ones they, they like, uh, so we'll get more input beyond the, the open house, which was very successful, I was so pleased with it because there were, a lot of people came and were very, very involved, so...
Well, I think it's an appropriate time of year for me to express thanks to the city staff for the great work you're doing, especially, uh, Imagine Lincoln City went very well, as Patty mentioned, and, uh, and thanks to fellow, fellow commissioners for all the time you spend at these meetings and other meetings, you know? And speaking of meetings, what about future meetings?
Future meetings, um, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December 5th, um, and , uh, we will have a, a brief training program at that meeting. And I, the meeting after that is scheduled for the 19th of December and my recommendation is that we cancel that.
I agree.
It's, it's up to you all, it's not mine to...
Cancel it?
I agree.
There will be possibly another Imagine Lincoln City meeting...
On the 19th.
On the 19th.
Right, yeah.
And commissioners will be welcome to attend that as...
We'll be here.
And we know the room will be available, so, Kate just told me.
Where is that, uh, meeting? Here?
Be here, on the 19th.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Richard, the meeting is adjourned.